Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritavro.
Here.
Trustee Pojak.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Please stand and join me in saying. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move on to public discussion and agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to participate? Anyone from public? None. New business. Discussion and approval of fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Mr. Polling.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. Always an honor to come and speak with you. And I especially am grateful of the opportunity to present tonight. As Village administrators mentioned many times, this meeting is the most, one of the most important meetings the Board can have. And I'll try to go fast, but I'll try to be clear because there's a lot of good information, I think, in the material we expect to go over tonight. And from there, we'll just get started. So we're going to discuss tonight the overview. We're going to overview the proposed village budget for FY '26. We're going to give an update on general fund reserves. And then we're going to review the next steps. But before we get into the business of budgets, I want to let you know that the tentative tax levy information from DuPage County for 2024, which is our fiscal 2026, was released a couple of weeks ago. And the good news for taxpaying residents and businesses in the village is that the actual levy rate decreased by 5.5%, going from 0.89 to 0.83 per hundred dollars of equalized assessed value. So always a good way to start off a budget with decreases. The timing of the budget cycle is designed so that the appropriation ordinance is adopted on or before May 1st. Having the appropriation ordinance approved before May 1st allows for project planning, bit scheduling, and implementation all to flow smoothly. Each department needs individually with administration and finance to review and discuss their budget. This allows for a thorough understanding regarding department operations. Taking a look at the proposed FY 2026 budget from the highest level, we see that total revenues for all funds are $82.5 million. And total expenses for all funds are $79.4 million. The main objective heading into budget season this year was how to put the village in the best possible position so that high-quality services can continue to be provided to our residents and businesses, and to do so in the face of economic uncertainty. With that in mind, staff have worked very hard at assembling a budget that meets the needs of our residents while keeping costs in check. And we believe that the fiscal 2026 budget continues to address the citizen priorities that were taken from the Northern Illinois University Community Survey. The economy that we live in today is truly global in scope, and we've witnessed that firsthand. Supply chain issues, high interest rates, and other factors put steady pressure on our budgets. Given such uncertainty, and in keeping with our pattern of conservatism, we believe that the budget you're being asked to consider tonight is realistic, but also flexible enough to adapt if economic circumstances warrant. The primary fund of the village is its general fund. Total revenues for the general fund are broken out by type and are shown here in this slide, with property and other taxes making up the majority of revenue sources. Tax revenues fuel 82% of the general fund revenue budget, with sales tax and home rule sales tax leading that way as far as the amounts that they're estimated to bring in. With that in mind, let's spend the next few minutes getting to know these taxes a bit better. Property taxes are collected by the village as a means to fund the village's required contributions to the police pension plan and the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. They also fund a portion of public safety, bond payments, required contributions to NedsRA, partial funding of the leisure services department, ESTA, and liability and workers' compensation insurance premiums. Sales tax represents the tax imposed on all sales within the village. Sales tax, unlike home rule sales tax, is imposed on all sales. This revenue source is directly impacted by the village's ability to drive economic activity within the village. With the grocery tax being eliminated beginning January 1, 2026, and the village standing to lose $300,000 to $400,000 of revenue because of that, the village is prepared to enact a 1% local grocery tax that would be in place January 1, 2026. The village is quite fortunate to have a mixed blend of sales tax-generating businesses, and it could certainly be a key reason why sales tax revenues have remained relatively stable. Home rule sales tax is imposed on all persons who are engaged in the business of selling tangible personal property at retail within the village. The village has imposed a 1.25% tax on these goods. For fiscal 2026, the budget proposes an increase of 1/4 of 1% on the home rule sales tax that would become effective October 1, 2025, and is estimated to generate approximately $500,000 through remaining six months of fiscal 2026. The income tax revenue represents the village's share as distributed from the state, and that's based on population. The income tax comes out of the Local Government Distributive Fund, or LGDF. The Illinois Municipal League, or the IML, fiscal 2026 estimate is $178.27 per capita. That's the income tax projection based on our census population of 33,176. Utility taxes come from revenue from ComEd Exelon for the municipal taxes charged on electric bills, and from gas providers like Nikor for municipal taxes charged on natural gas bills. The electric tax is based on kilowatt-hours used on a tiered scale, while the natural gas tax is 5% based on thermes used. The telecommunications tax is placed on telephone, mobile, radio, internet, and other taxable communications, and that tax rate is 6%. Automobile rental tax is imposed on businesses that rent automobiles in the state. The personal property replacement tax represents revenues collected by the state and paid to local governments to replace money that was lost by local governments when their powers to impose personal property taxes on corporations, partnerships, and other business entities were taken away years and years and years ago. An amusement tax is imposed on businesses that hold a liquor license and have entertainment. The tax rate is 1% on receipts when an admission fee is charged, and 10% when no admission fee is charged. The video gaming tax applies on net video gaming terminal income, and that tax rate is 5%. At present, there are 22 establishments operating a total of 128 video gaming machines. Use taxes relate to out-of-state purchases of tangible personal property and are subject to the 6.25% state use tax. The municipality share is 16% of that and is distributed on a per capita basis. The Illinois Municipal League estimates the per capita distribution at $19.60. This estimate is significantly lower than in prior years, and that's due to the enactment of the Leveling the Playing Field Illinois Retail Act that took effect January 1. The offset, we will see, in higher sales tax revenues. Cannabis excise tax is the tax on all adult-use cannabis sales. A portion of the tax is redistributed based on population from the state. Again, the per capita estimate from the IML is $1.66 per capita. The village also collects sales, home rule sales, and cannabis sales tax from the one business we have in the village. The real estate transfer tax is the tax on the sale or conveyance of property from one party to another. The tax rate is $3 for each $1,000 in sales value. The food and beverage tax applies to restaurants, including takeout only, and includes establishments that sell alcohol. The tax rate is 1% currently. For FY 2026, the budget proposes an increase of 1/2 of 1% on the food and beverage tax that would become effective June 1, 2025, and is estimated to generate approximately $350,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year. There are currently about 108 establishments in the village that are subject to the tax. Hotel tax applies on hotels or motels for occupancy. That tax rate is 7%. And an additional $1,000 for each period of stay that's longer than 30 days, but no more than 90 days. Enough about taxes. Provided here are the other revenues applicable to the general fund. Licenses and permits include things such as vehicle stickers, building permits, and single- and multifamily rental licenses. Charges for services include the franchise fees for cable television and the real estate inspection program. Fines and forfeitures include parking and compliance tickets and red light camera violations. Interest income is the money earned on idle funds in the village's savings account and on other investments. Other revenues include things like towing and impound charges. And grants include federal, state, and local sources. And before I go on and get a sip, are there any questions about that part? Okay. That's what I was afraid of. On the expense side of things, personnel costs, wages, and benefits account for the highest category of expenditures in the general fund. Counting the adjustments that were just approved as part of the third-quarter budget review, we're projecting the general fund balance to be at $22.7 million at the conclusion of fiscal year 2025. For fiscal 2026, we're requesting to use $1.2 million of general fund balance that would be pledged for the Simons Park project. This would reduce the unrestricted fund balance reserves to the equivalent of about 8.6 months of expenditures, continuing to exceed both GFOA and village reserve policy. Since adopting a fund balance policy in 2023, the village has successfully surpassed it each year. With personnel-related expenditures representing almost 2/3 of the general fund budget, we wanted to provide a summary table that shows personnel costs by division, along with the employee counts, including full, part-time, and seasonal positions. Wages for FOP patrol and sergeants, Teamster Public Works, and building and maintenance are all based on the current contracts. Ask-me employees just began contract bargaining this month. For health insurance, the village was notified on March 3rd that the Blue Cross Blue Shield premiums will only be increased by 5%, and that's much better than we thought. And with regard to retirement costs, the IMRF rate for calendar 2025 is 7.53%. And what you're seeing in this table, everyone, are just the salaries, not the benefits on top of that. In all, the village has about 30 individual funds, each with their own unique purpose. Within the special revenue fund grouping is the Leisure Services Fund, which includes special events, senior center, golf course, and recreation functions. Special revenue funds also include infrastructure, our seven TIF districts, and our eight special service area districts. Capital funds include certain capital projects, while the debt service fund services the 2019 general obligation bond issue. The insurance fund is established for liability and workers' compensation coverages for both premiums and for claims. The enterprise fund accounts for water sewer and wastewater treatment operations. And last is the police pension fund. With the launch of the new financial system in May 1, there will also be significant changes, both in the fund structures as well as the chart of accounts, all in an effort to provide better transparency and consistency. So we'll go from 28 funds down to 14 funds. The infrastructure fund and the capital projects fund will be combined into one, as will the eight special service area funds. The eight become one. The MFT, TIF, debt service, environmental, and police pension funds will stay at the status quo. No change. So the next several slides will take us through each general fund department, and I'll attempt to bring one item of note within that department that you may or may not find of interest. We begin at the beginning with the village board's budget, which you should be very interested in. Proposed funding is $127,085. The salaries and benefit budget include the village clerk stipend payments in with this division, so all elected official annual stipends are included in this one place. Next in line is the village clerk's budget, which is essentially the same as in FY 2025, the current year. Included under committees and commissions.
Question.
Yes.
Mr. Bill. Village clerk is getting two checks. You know, one is as a clerk, second is as a collector. Did you, are you keeping that $5,000 which she was not doing anything? You know, still she's not doing anything.
I'm believing. I've not been given any direction to change.
Okay.
What we're doing. Committees and commissions within those, within that division are the Police Commission, Plan Commission, and the Youth Commission, with the Police Commission having the largest budget of the three. Board member meeting stipends are also paid to members appointed to both the Police and Plan Commission, and the budget includes an increase in the per-meeting stipend. The Historic House budget is next. The Historical Committee is requesting funds to raise community awareness in the House through some special events and fundraisers. Funding is also being sought to undertake an exterior building assessment. Next is village administration. There are no proposed changes in budgeted staffing. And the one item of interest that impacts this department, as well as several others as they go along, relates to what we call central services. The Central Services Department budget has been zeroed out, and all of those expenses which were there have been redistributed to other departments and divisions. So the two items that were in central services that have been moved to administration are legal costs and flowers, memorial flowers. Human resources follows village administration. There is no change in personnel. Employee service awards are funded in this department, and there are 12 employees that will receive special recognition for their years of service to the village. The items moved from central services to this department are dental claims, self-funded dental claims, and employer costs that are mandated under the Public Safety Employee Benefits Act, or PCEBA. Public Relations is next. There are no changes in personnel. Funds have been requested to redesign the village's website in order to meet ADA compliance. And as I mentioned, all items shown previously in the Central Services Division have been redirected to other departments, so there is no more central services. Next up are the Police Department budgets, which, as you would expect, are the largest within the general fund. We'll start with Police Administration, which includes five full-time staff. The partnership that we have with Bloomingdale Township, which funds mental health counseling services provided by Northeast DuPage Family and Youth Services, is paid out of this department. Costs absorbed here from central services include prosecution and adjudication as well as a portion of postage expenses. Patrol Division is next, and the personnel budget includes 47 sworn officers. The second year of a federal grant that was awarded to the department will help underwrite some salary and longevity costs, as well as some operating costs. Investigations is next. This division includes funding for 13 full-time staff, which constitutes the majority of the proposed budget. Support Division is next, and includes police department records and crossing guards in the salary budget. The agreement with the village of Addison for consolidated dispatch service also falls in this budget and consumes 43% of the total division. The remaining divisions of the Police Department budget are for community-oriented policing programs and certain program-specific functions. There are no personnel costs within these two divisions. The next department is my absolute fave, the Finance Department. We have 11 full-time positions, two of which are funded in the Environmental Fund, and a seasonal intern that assists with vehicle sticker sales. Several items have been moved to finance from central services, including payroll and HR services, a portion of postage expenses, lease costs for our postage machine, copy paper that's used in all departments, third-party collection fees, credit card charges, and administrative collection fee that the state levies. Our department is working towards launching the Tyler Muniz Financial System, and we're shooting for a May 1, 1st launch date. And the utility billing component is expected to be ready later this year.
Excuse me, Bill, I got a question. Hey Doug, are we charging, are we charging for the credit card usage?
Not yet, not at this, not at this time, no. That's the discussion that we have to have at some point, though.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I have one question. Can you please mention about, you know, Mayor Desmille? Am I using village credit card?
No, sir.
No. Am I claiming those 59 cents per mile for my, using card for village business?
Not that I'm aware of, Mayor.
For a year, I did not claim.
There was an expense report that you submitted through me a week or so ago.
No, 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 I don't want to claim, you know. Number one. Number two, I didn't use village credit card. And people, some from the board, they are spreading news that this mayor is corrupt, you know. And want, my message is to all those people, if anybody from the village or anybody from the board or any staff member can prove that I took one penny illegally, which I'm not entitled, I will return 100,000 times of that money, you know. This is my character. They cannot blame my character, you know, that I took village money, you know. People, they are taking money, village money, and they feel some embarrassment, you know.
May I continue?
Yeah, please.
We now come to Community Development Administration. Salary budget supports nine full-time and one part-time position. For budget purposes, the director's position, which is currently open, is funded at nine months, assuming the position will be filled within the first quarter of the new fiscal year. A portion of credit card charges and postage have also been moved to this department from Central Services. The other division within Community Development is the Inspections Division, which is staffed with seven full-time positions. Prosecution and adjudication costs that were shared with police are shown in this division, so we split that 50/50, 50/50, 150/50. After Police, Public Works is the next largest department in terms of budget. The department is broken down into several divisions and shown in both the General and Environmental Fund. For the Administration Division, the staffing complement totals four, along with an engineering intern. Half of the GIS Consortium contract agreement was moved from Central Services to this budget, and the other half will be seen in the Environmental Fund. Next up is the Streets Division, which contains funding for 14 full-time positions. A 2013 F-250 truck is being scheduled for replacement and added to the Enterprise Vehicle Financing Program, which has been very beneficial to the village in terms of both vehicle availability and cash flow. Funds have also been proposed to improve and expand the impound lot. This budget also contains the revenues and costs related to street sweeping services that are billed on behalf of the village by Republic Services. The last division within Public Works Department is the Fleets Division. Public Works has been working with Administration and Finance to develop a new program, which would have a new position, that of low-voltage mechanic, assigned to upfit village police vehicles, as well as others from outside of our village, and then bill those agencies for time and material. The position would, of course, prioritize village vehicles first, and the program would not require any subsidy from village general funds. The proposed budget for Parks and Grounds is next. It includes 11 full-time and eight seasonal personnel, including four park rangers. One item to note in this particular budget is the funding for tree replacements, which will be supplemented with non-motor-fuel tax fund monies that come from the road program. The Facilities Division budget includes 12 full-time staff. In some cases, supplies and repair costs that are coordinated through facilities are also budgeted in Leader Services and in the Environmental Fund. A few expenses that were in Central Services are reflected here, including electric, natural gas, water, and meeting-related expenses. As I near the end of the general fund department review, we have Information Services next. There are two full-time positions and an intern, supplemented with the outsourcing contract the village agreement, the village agreement, the village has, holy cow, with Prescient. Village-wide telephone and wireless phone charges were moved from Central Services to IS, and there'll be a total of 40 desktop and laptop computers that'll be replaced. Those funds are also included in this budget. Last in the general fund, we have transfers that are made to other village funds. Because each fund is self-supporting for accounting purposes, we use fund transfers to move cash to these funds, which either don't generate revenue on their own, or if they do, they don't generate enough, and they therefore have to be supplemented from the general fund. And before I move out of the general fund, are there any other questions? Any questions? The other subset of the general fund is the Insurance Fund. Presented here is the summary. Revenues from this fund come from transfers from the general fund and from the Environmental Fund. Expenses that are paid from the Insurance Fund include premiums for liability and workers' compensation insurance coverage, as well as self-insured costs that may occur. There are also broker and consultant expenses that are charged against this fund. The fund reserves are currently below the level recommended by independent actuaries, so that's a project that we're going to need to work on.
Excuse me, Bill. Doug, do we have any of your workman's comp files open yet, or are they all taken care of?
We have a couple of continuing workman's comp cases that are ongoing.
Okay.
I mean, nothing catastrophic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for giving me a break.
You needed it, Bill.
Thank you, sir.
So, Bill, I have a question. So does this include our insurance premium, which goes high? Is that included?
It's included in here, yes.
Do you know how much we are paying more now?
I'm going to look to the other side of the aisle. I don't know the number off the top of my head. I could get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
This is the fund summary for Leisure Services. If you were to break down the revenues in this fund, you would discover that special events, senior center, and recreation activities all require subsidy transfers from the general fund, while golf operations, golf operations are self-supporting. Special events is the first division to speak about. There are no positions in this budget, just supplies, promotional materials, and entertainment costs for the many events taking place all year round. Having a variety of events is just one way the village is able to engage with the community. The Administration Division of Leisure Services covers two full-time staff, including the director, and minimal operating costs. The Senior Center comes next. 2026 2026 marks the 16th anniversary for the center, which currently boasts 733 members and receives about 31,000 visits annually. Improvements were completed earlier this year and include new flooring throughout, as well as some much-needed storage space. The one new item in this budget is the installation of security cameras. Recreation administration is next. It's budgeted similar to leisure services administration, except that there are some additional operating costs, such as utilities, supplies, and advertising. Recreation programming division includes offerings for tots, teens, and adults, and a variety of program opportunities for both indoor and outdoor, and in all seasons. Preschool staff is all part-time, so whenever school is not in session, some of these part-time people take on other jobs in recreation, which is beneficial to the village. It's been harder and harder for this program to remain viable, with school districts offering free programming. Within the aquatic division, staff continually look for innovative ways to draw more visitors to the facility and showcase its amenities. The day camp and after-school program has enjoyed strong participation through the years, and as reflected in the budget numbers themselves. Keeping programs fresh and appealing to youth is the constant challenge. Within the facilities division for recreation, there are no personnel costs, just contracted janitorial services and routine maintenance expenses. As we swing over to golf, my one pun for the night. We begin with administration, so it was like bogey, wasn't it? Which is budget, golf administration is budgeted very similar to recreation administration. Personnel includes one full-time and one part-time position, and also contains funding for general overhead expenses that are associated with the clubhouse. For the golf and pro shop division, there's one full-time staff person budgeted. Fair weather has been a friend of the course this year so far, the result of which has been rounds being played in February and in March. For FY 2026, the course expects to log 27,000 rounds.
Oh, Bill, before you get going again.
Yes, sir.
Bill, we have a contract, remember. When will that expire?
It's good for five years. This is year three.
Five years, all right, thanks, Keith.
Thank you. For the new fiscal year, the golf restaurant will be experimenting with some different menu and food options aimed at generating more revenue. The banquet arrangement with Belgio's will be entering its third year, and as a way to improve client service, staff will be changing the way golfing events that include food are contracted. Instead of contracting with Belgio's for food and then Glendale Lakes for the golf portion of an event, the client will contract with Glendale Lakes for golf and food and pay Glendale Lakes. Belgio's will then build the golf course for the food service portion. A cleaner transaction. There are two full-time positions along with seasonal staff that make up the salary and benefit budget for the grounds division. Increased play will require a proportionate amount of maintenance and upkeep on the course itself, as well as the equipment that's used in keeping the course in great condition. The remaining division in golf and for leisure services is the annual charity golf classic. Now in its 24th year, I hope I have that right. Be sure to mark your calendars for Wednesday, August 27, for that great event. For presentation purposes, I've combined the budgets of the motor fuel tax fund and the infrastructure fund. The $4.1 million in audited reserves are taken from the fiscal 2024 financial statements, and they do not include outstanding purchase orders. Revenue estimates for the MFT allotment come from the Illinois Municipal League and are per capita base, using the 2020 census count of 33,176 people. It'll be interesting in the coming years to see as more and more electric vehicles hit the roadways, to see what kind of state legislation emerges to make up for declining gas tax revenues. Other anticipated revenues come from a federal and county stormwater grant, local gas tax, and road and bridge taxes that are passed on from Bloomingdale and Milton Townships. Of course, the largest revenue source comes in the form of the general fund transfer. The local gas tax revenue is based on the rate that we changed last year at 4 cents per gallon. Shown here are the streets and two parking lots that are to be included in the 2025 road program to be funded from MFT and infrastructure fund revenues. The total road program for fiscal 2026 is $4.55 million. The goal of the village's road program is to have all roads resurfaced or reconstructed in a 15-year cycle. However, this depends on the availability of funds to achieve this goal. Here are some other infrastructure projects that are included in the upcoming budget. Note that the total sidewalk repair replacement budget has again been increased this year due to the awarding of a $300,000 DCEO grant. The Armitage Creek Stormwater Project is being partially funded with federal and county grants. The maintenance and monitoring of the East Branch Tributary Number Two area had been funded through Tiff District Number One, but that Tiff was closed in 2021. The remaining special revenue funds are listed here, and there really isn't a lot to talk about with them, so I'm just going to move on to save a minute or two. Here's the capital fund summary. All of these projects are fully funded via transfer from the general fund, with the exception of the Simons Park Project, which has been awarded a $600,000 OSLID grant. Construction is expected to begin this fall. The debt service fund is established to accumulate resources used in making annual principal and interest payments, it should be semi-annual, principal and interest payments on the general obligation series bond 2019 issue. And here's the repayment schedule for that bond issue. A portion of the principal and interest payments comes through the tax levy, while the remaining amounts are funded from the environmental fund, and are referred to as We've now arrived at the environmental fund. You'll note that the proposed budget will not require a draw on reserves. As mentioned previously in the discussion of the MFT and infrastructure funds, the 2024 audited net position of $8.7 million does not include purchase order commitments. It's also worth mentioning that the presentation of this fund is done on what we call an accrual basis, whereby some incoming funds are not shown as revenues, and some expenses are shown as capitalized assets. This format is to more closely represent the fund to the published audited financial The DuPage Water Commission announced a tentative increase of 4% to the cost of water purchased by the village effective May 1. By ordinance, these costs are directly passed on. Other rates for water delivery, sewer, debt service, and capital infrastructure are directly taken from the rates approved by the village board last April and will govern for the next two fiscal years. The 10% discount for qualifying senior citizens who own rent or leased property and are age 65 or older remains in place as well. There's a 10% discount on the water bill. There are currently 777 seniors that are enrolled in the discount program. You'll remember that when we were showing the slide for the general fund portion of public works administration, that the salaries and benefits are shared equally with the environmental fund. Well, this is that other half. This division also provides funding for the remaining half of that GIS consortium contract and interest payments on three IEP-A loans for the digester project, phosphorus project, and water supply facilities project. Next is the water division, which currently has a staff of eight full-time personnel. Of the $5.4 million shown for operating costs, 87% or $4.7 million represents the purchase of water from the DuPage Water Commission. Among the five major water infrastructure projects included in this budget is the water main replacement at Jill and Marilyn, which will be partially funded through a CDBG federal grant. The next division to present is the sewer division, which includes nine full-time staff. Two capital projects found in this division relate to North Avenue sewer lining and gravity catchment area repairs. Within the wastewater treatment plant division, there are 10 full-time staff. Significant capital expenditures are also identified in this division, as has been the case for the last few years, including the completion of the $12.3 million phosphorus upgrade project. For the fleets division, there are funds included in the budget for repairs to vehicles and equipment as may be needed. There are no personnel in this division. And finally, there is the water billing division, which includes two full-time finance department staff. Although the duties of these two people extend to transactions other than water billing, like vehicle stickers and real estate transfer stamps, a majority of their time is spent dealing with water billing matters. As mentioned earlier, we're expecting to go live with the new utility billing module later this year. And my final budget shout-out goes to the police pension fund, which receives revenue from the tax levy, police employee contributions, and investment income. As per the most recent actuarial evaluation, the fund was at 64% funded. Investments and investment management for the fund was handed over to IPAPA, which is the Illinois Police Officers Pension Investment Fund, in 2022, and that was mandated by the state. So to close, the last order of business I am respectfully requesting is that the board approve the 2025-2026 village budget as presented or amended. A public hearing will precede the April 17 board meeting, and the annual appropriation ordinance will be included on that agenda, along with a request to waive first reading. Upon adoption, the appropriation ordinance will be filed with DuPage County as required by law. And if you have no more questions, I thank you for your time.
Any question from the board?
I have one.
Yes.
On page 76, you show the interest expense on the IEP-A loans. When are the payments on the principles going to be?
They're the same frequency. They're semi-annual, just like the interest payments are. But for accounting purposes, we're not showing the principal payment as an expense, because it's a reduction of a loan, so it's different accounting treatment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Yes, go ahead.
Doug, do you have any idea how much the water rate's gonna go up on us?
Well, Bill has it off the top of his head. It goes up a dollar for debt service and a dollar for...
Dollar for debt service and a dollar for the capital infrastructure.
There you go.
And the 4% that the DuPage Water Commission is putting on the village that we have to pass through.
The big increase was last year.
Yes.
Now, the next three cycles are a dollar, a dollar, a dollar.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? It's very good budget, beautiful budget. Thank you for presenting this. So I need a motion to approve FY 2025-26 budget. Bill Schmidt.
I move that the board approve the 2025-26 village budget as presented.
Light, just light.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sadeke.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Great job, Bill, yes.
Motion to approve fiscal year 2025 budget is approved. Number two, approval of FY 2025-26 non-union pay plan. Is there a motion to approve fiscal years 2025-26 non-union pay plan? Pat.
So moved.
Second, trustee Sadeke.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. No discussion, okay.
We didn't discuss.
Okay. Discussion, any comments? No? No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Sadeke.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to approve FY 2025-26 is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. Anybody from public that would like to comment on agenda items? Adjournment.
Just before you adjourn, Bill, we want the board of trustees, want to say thank you. I know this is gonna be your last meeting, so we wish you the best of luck on your next...
And one more.
One more meeting?
One more.
Okay, well, we want, this will be your last budget meeting.
Yes, sir.
So we wish you the best of luck on your adventure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No cake, I didn't save any lives.
Okay, you've been great to us for as many years you've been working.
Actually, I did not say thank you, because I thought it would be private, you know. So I want to keep your privacy, number one. Number two, and I found you one of the best professional, hard worker, so on, you know. I have no words.
I have a great team.
Yeah.
They make it all happen.
But leadership counts, number one, and you are there. Thank you very much. Okay, so adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, and roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sadeke.
Yes.
This motion, we're going to adjourn.